Want to call me in order?
I think it's just a short one and they haven't had a chance to look at it. No, it's October 30th. Which is the full period. No more people here.
Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing. 7:05. This has been read advertised as basically just a continuation of the last meeting because of a technical mistake that the chairman made. So... I've added. We understand we have new submissions.
Well, we finally got an official survey of the property for you. And this is the raw details of the property. And then there is a schematic greenhouse as well. And if I give you a copy of all of these, there is some information.
Is this a complete packet now?
Yes. This is everything that...
Except for these.
Except for those.
Well, there's no written.
You want some written material as well?
We already have that.
You've had that before, but we're glad to give you just a slight piece of it.
Thank you.
And Scott Soares will be presenting.
So you have the narrative from the much earlier submission going all the way back, I think, to about four months back from the very first submission.
Have there been no changes made to it the last four months?
The only changes that have been made, not on that, there haven't been. But based on the survey, and we did do a survey as Stephen just passed out. In large part because the zoning board who we're actually gonna be meeting with night after tomorrow, they wanted a survey done. And although this board told us originally we didn't need to do the survey, we wanted to submit that as well because we understand that's a part of your bylaw process. As a result of this survey, we also did this drawing. It's a reconfiguration.
Yeah, which we had a good board. I don't know how this one is.
I think this one will, we were able to make this one work for us.
The other night? That diagram is the last letter in the graphic package, 2014 as well.
So you have a small eight by 11 of this in your package. This is the last page. So we're gonna submit this as well with the survey. Get it up here so we can walk you through it.
I'm not seeing a... Anything about the electrical consumption. This says nothing about the electrical use. Which was in the package that you guys emailed us.
Yes.
So this is the last page. I know you already have, the documents that you have there is the staple pack. You already received those. But as a result of the meetings we've had thus far, the site visit that we held.
Thank you.
And the survey plan. We had originally intended on moving these greenhouses anyway. So we're actually still moving those greenhouses. But as a result of the survey, now we have the lines drawn. So although originally we were looking to get a variance from the zoning board, we no longer are pursuing that because we're just chopping the ends off the greenhouses so that we stay within the envelope. That keeps us within the 50-foot setback requirements by your bylaws and still allows us to get at 99 hundred square feet of growing space within the greenhouses, reoriented within that same envelope. So you now have that as the last page.
Does the greenhouse on the top line say?
No. As I said, these greenhouses are being turned this way. So the key, and it's in your packet, the last page of your packet. You'll see a key at the bottom that identifies the green areas, shortened and relocated greenhouses with survey 50-foot setback envelope, 66 by 15, four of those. And then 66 by 30, these two here. And then this harvest building in that same space. So that was originally in the drawings, but it wasn't as clear as this, nor was it superimposed on. This is a reproduction of what the survey that you have in front of you. So what we did is we used the survey image to actually draw the greenhouse. It's a scale, so you could see how those would fit within the envelope of...
The envelope being the 50-foot setback.
That's correct.
Right. As well as the 500-foot setback.
Correct. Correct. Now, the 500-foot, and that's all in the survey plan.
You have somewhere from the school board here, so you might want to point out the 500-foot.
It's actually better to look at from the survey itself. If they'd like to come up and take a look at that, they can do that. But here's the survey. This is the formal stamped surveys from an architectural firm, a survey company that came up. There was a question on the setbacks for the school property. So to this pin, 500 feet south of the school property is here.
This is the border of the school property.
Border of the school property is here. This is 500 feet from that property line. This is...
So at the last meeting, it was gonna be like 600 something feet. That's changed?
No, that hasn't changed. The, so the greenhouses themselves, it was 600. This is showing your compliance with Wheatley's bylaws of 500-foot setback, so that we're well within the 500-foot setback of where the property is.
Might be easier to see on this one. I can see it on here. Here, Morgan. Here's the satellite.
So again, primarily the zoning board, who had asked us to get a survey plan. Again, despite this board saying we didn't need it, we wanted to submit that as well because it gives you the exact survey measurements stamped by a professional land surveyor per your site plan bylaws. So as I mentioned when I first started talking, we started the process back in May with the very first communication to the town. Depending on what date we use, I know we had an application that was signed as submitted August 28th with a July 31 public hearing initiation at that point. So we've essentially been having a hearing over the three meetings that we've been with you, plus the site visit that we had for the board. And over that six months now, and providing the survey plans in addition to above what you originally requested for, we're hopeful that we can draw the hearing to a close and that unless there are other requirements that you have, I went through the nine different criteria in your zoning bylaws over what it takes for this board to approve a site plan. And based on what we have and what we're drawing using existing greenhouses, we're well within all of those criteria. And we would encourage the board to move as a favorable vote on our site plan approval.
Well, it looks, I mean, I haven't read the whole thing through yet, but it looks like it's finally a complete submission. You've got now all the information that we've been hoping to get. Is this security fence still accurate?
This is the security fence anyway.
So this page is not relevant?
That is not relevant, correct.
But this, okay, this is part of your final submission here. I should tear it out? We should just remove those?
Yeah, you can remove that.
This security fence won't be accurate until the fence is installed.
Well, but... I'm sorry. It did need to be.
That's right.
But that diagram doesn't show gates? It doesn't show...
Correct. Well, this is accurate as far as placement of gates, placement of security. The security plan that we reviewed with the chief of police will still be relevant. It will still need to be approved by the cannabis commission. We have received notification from them that our application has been received as complete. We expect a provisional license from them in short order, once the folks get back from holidays. And following that, we want to meet the growing season, so really need an approval so that we can start making some investments in moving more of the equipment around and more of the greenhouses around and getting the material order that we need to get the site up and running.
I don't see where the exterior lights would be.
They should be in the document that you have. And again, we reviewed the security plan with your chief of police, and it would need to be approved by the cannabis commission.
I guess I'm confused how the building inspector is going to take that diagram and some of these others and know which is operative. Am I the only one?
You can look at the comprehensive package.
Building is gonna be the utility building.
Well, somebody's gonna have to testify that the lights are where they ought to be, the cameras at once that they ought to be. And he is our...
Zoning enforcement agent.
Zoning enforcement agent. So it's not a matter entirely building permits. It's a matter of ensuring that it's built as it's supposed to be. And I guess I would, if I were he, I would be confused.
We had a plan that showed where the lights were gonna be, didn't we?
I thought we did.
Is that as part of the original...
There was never any plan with lights.
There was never gonna be security lights.
You can't have security lights at a grow facility because it would interrupt the photo periods.
And we talked about the cameras that you said. And we both agreed we're not gonna put the cameras on the map.
Because the chief of police said that he wants...
That makes sense.
And the cameras would be infrared. I also had, now that you're mentioning it, there was concern that was raised throughout the public hearing process of folks not having light pollution, and that we wanted to respect that as well. So infrared cameras are what we're going with the plan at this point, and we plan to put up around it so...
Okay, the site plan no longer shows security building.
It's here.
That's labeled though as a harvest building.
That's where all of our equipment will be located. It's the only, if you look at what's within the fencing, it's the only hard building that we have. It's comparable to the same building that we had in the original diagrams. And it's the only building that will have to house all of our electric, our equipment for the security cameras, for the pumping system, for irrigation. You know, that'll be our location for all of that storage, et cetera, will be in that little building.
Can you describe this? On page four, there's a reference to a...
I'm sorry, page four of which document?
The text. Does the security fence will provide up to 200 fully screened side light affecting the butters using fence screen slats?
Yes.
Or attached shade cloth, as shown below. I think we had requested that you specify one or the other specifications.
The specifications for...
That wasn't mentioned. That was not mentioned.
We need to know how you're going to screen it.
Well, it's either gonna be, depending on cost, a cloth like this that actually obscures everything, or slats that go through the chain link fence.
Do you have a description of the slats?
You're seeing a picture of it in front of you there.
I thought this was the cloth.
Sorry?
I thought this is the cloth.
That's the cloth. So it'll either be the cloth or it'll be slats. I don't have a picture of the slats, but I can call one up on the phone pretty quick. It's pretty standard for what you've seen through any chain link fence. They're narrow strips that go diagonal through the chain link fence. And I can call up a picture on our phone right now if you'd like to see a picture of what that looks like. But it's pretty standard. We also understand that, and the reason why you see the dotted line here, it's not compliant with any setback requirements because the fencing does not need to comply with setback requirements within the town. So the fencing is purely for the security measures. It's primarily driven by not only our need to avoid loss of product and intrusion on the property, but also as required by the cannabis commission. It'll be a part of the final inspection before we need a license to operate.
Did the ZBA give you an opinion about that? Or is that just your opinion on the fence?
Yes, Roger said the setbacks are only from structures.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is there a description of the alarms? Sorry, we haven't had a chance, but we're...
There's not a description of the alarms because we talked about those in previous meetings. And we did talk to the chief of police on those alarms, and those are not things that we want to share publicly for security reasons. And we talked to this board specifically about that.
We talked about position. What we need to know is, and I think should be documented, is whether they ring loudly on site.
They will not ring loudly on site.
It would be helpful to have that documented.
We were under the impression that the security would be left to Chief Savin and the CCC to sign off on their...
Our concerns... I think we're into two different sets of concerns. Obviously, the chief has to sign off on whether it's adequate or not. Our concern is impact on our butters. And so if you had big flashing lights or huge noisy cars...
Again, that falls under the security plan, and that was to be kept confidential.
I don't know that they're mutually exclusive. So if you have verbally told us that they would be silent, oh, I don't think we have any documentation of that. And I would feel more comfortable. I mean, we can condition that, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
But I, you know, I'm sure that the chief would, you know, we could come to some arrangement where it's comfortable with the security, but I...
It does describe the manner of notifications in the text.
We do, yeah.
It says, "Security breach alerted no more than five minutes. Additional notifications. This notification shall be in the form of page two under the security and publication site. Notifications shall be in the form of a telephone call, text message, or phone alert," which sounds appropriate.
That's taken right out of the CCC 935 CMR 500. Which I will say they accepted our security plan as written, the CCC did, so that was part of getting the file.
And with all due respect, the board has had this information for four months. This written document, you've had this document for four months.
Actually, there's a number of differences between the ones that I did in October. I have dated October, August 28th. I don't actually know what the date is because...
For the original one that was submitted. So what was originally submitted was a written document, and that's the document that you have the text in front of you.
Well, that document says there will be, because it's indoors, there's no need for artificial, I mean, there are some major differences since that document was sent.
Let's not argue over little details on that.
So we're trying to find out what's in this one.
You're trying to make us look bad.
No, 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 I'm not doing that at all.
Well, you are, because you say we've had it for all this time. I just wish you'd leave those kind of statements out of this.
Very good.
Thank you. So are there any other questions by the board at this point?
I thought the energy plan looked great. Looked like just what we were hoping for, I thought. I don't know what the rest of the board felt about it.
Well, I had some concerns about how much the scrubbers we run and the fans with the scrubbers and what they might do, but the rest of it I thought was fantastic.
Thank you.
Well, I had a bit of concern about that, but the numbers are so skewed the other way that I think they would have to probably run 24 hours a day.
On page two of the energy calculation, the last paragraph refers to a GDD.
That's growing degree days?
Growing degree days, okay. I saw the HDD, I knew what that was. Got it.
That seems good. Thanks.
I have some questions about the odor system. It doesn't specify... I'm reading it here. All we had before was the diagram. I don't see any mention of where the scrubbers will be placed, how many of them there will be. I mean, moving one scrubber from greenhouse to greenhouse or having three in every greenhouse. It's not clear how many. I don't, excuse me, I'm just moving as I go along here, but I, it describes the KN-150.
Yeah, we have one in one greenhouse now that we've already purchased. The plan would be to have one wherever there is any cultivation going on in each greenhouse. And we purchased that in large part so we could see that during the tour and see it in operation here, and so that you would see that it's not a loud piece of machinery so it won't disturb the neighborhood.
Now, does the fan have to run for this to be effective?
It does.
And what activates it? Does the odor level activate?
It can be activated automatically or it can be activated manually by turning a switch. By turning a switch, physically turning a switch.
Automatically means if the odor reaches a certain level?
Or humidity, likely humidity. It won't register your odor. It will register humidity levels or it will be timed to go on automatically, but it will only run during a certain phase when the plants are actually blooming. So it really won't run all the time.
Because there's no mention of this one being one per greenhouse, I think we should probably make that a condition.
Well, also, I think we need to specify that when things are flowering, should it run all the time? I would think so, if it, either that or somebody's gonna have to be on site to turn it on and off.
I think we would leave it to the growers discretion to control odor. The requirement is that odor doesn't get beyond the property line. And so I don't know why we would micromanage their use of this tool they have to control odor.
It can also be on a timed switch, so it can go on every 10 minutes. It will exchange the atmosphere every 28 minutes in a large greenhouse.
Are you intending to have at least one in each greenhouse?
Yes, absolutely.
I just think it should be specified now.
Okay, well, we'll make that a condition then. Get that married?
That's the only one so far, right? Or are you, well, that's, everybody said yes.
Now, we had talked before about having an engineer possibly certify that the proposed odor mechanisms were adequate. And since I have no personal capability to judge that, I would feel better if we did have that.
I think that, personally, I think that would be a bit onerous. The applicants have claimed that they want to be good neighbors because they want to keep this operation going, and I don't believe that they would put in something that wasn't working in. We're not good neighbors.
So the building inspector is the person to contact. For instance, for the school while it's in session, if there's odors, they would call the building inspector? I think the Board of Health.
Or just talk to the people who are growing the product. It seems like a good place to start.
Yep.
I guess I'm not too, I'm not as worried about the odor as maybe you, as any butter might be, or other butters might be.
It will be very interesting to find out how this is.
This is, yeah. Uncharted territory.
So that's why I think it's especially important for the butters, particularly children during school day, and the school to know who to contact when there is an issue.
Yes, good point.
In Wheatley, this past growing season, there was a four-acre field of hemp growing. Hemp is the same species as marijuana. I happened to talk to the chief of police yesterday, and I asked him about that, did he notice any smell? He said, "I never smelled it." It was just across from the police station. We're not going to have four acres of cannabis growing. And so, yes, if you're in the greenhouse, you will smell the odor.
Are they equally odoriferous?
Yes. Essentially, the difference between...
It's the same species.
And cannabis is THC versus not THC.
You can have flowers that smell strongly in flowers that don't have much smell.
Exactly. Functionally, to the human eye, you couldn't tell which is what.
If we do that, well... I think if, in that case, we should require that it have as a condition that the Board of Health approved the odor control plan because this was something they specifically had concerns about, and they haven't seen this. And in fact, I guess all the committees need to see this before.
Because this packet is now...
This packet is...
Is new to everybody.
It's new to everybody, so all the committees need to see it, but in this case specifically the Board of Health.
I don't know that the Board of Health has a, I don't know what good that would do. I don't know if they have the expertise to...
They express concern to us with the original plan about odor control and disposal of materials on the site. And I think since it's new, but obviously they need to sign off on it. I feel a specific condition since odor was their concern that they should sign off.
Okay. I will say this system that we're gonna be using is identical to what ITSA in East Hampton uses, RISE uses, and Holyoke, and they are very close to a butters. We're talking, you know, 10, 15, 20 feet. And I can tell you, they are extremely effective. It's the industry standard for controlling odor.
The written material you have, the only real change in it was the listing of the figures. The last figure they added to it, I think we would have to figure out...
The odor control is new.
Yes.
In this write-up. But yes, see, a lot of it seemed very familiar.
I think one thing that seems to me to be new is they have this, there's one crop per year in most greenhouses. Last time you were here, we were talking to...
Where do you see that, under the energy plan?
Yes, number one.
This is how it was in the original version as well.
Well, verbally, you were saying two. So you're doing one crop a year, you're not doing the winter crop anymore?
At this point, it's going to be one.
So if we approve this, then presumably you stay at one.
Well, that, you know, it's gonna be more... This is a site plan review, not a grow review.
Well, except the energy plan is based on that.
The energy plan also, though, is so disparate from how much they would have to put in there if it was a greenhouse, that you can go through the energy plan and double everything for the, well, actually, because it's a full year.
The energy plan is actually based on lights.
Right. Lights and some heat.
And some heat.
Right.
And the fans.
And the fans.
Yes. So...
But presumably, if you grow in the wintertime, you're gonna have more. The energy plan is... I guess this doesn't, what concerns me is this implies perpetuity, and you're saying, well, it's the start. And I don't, I can't think of anything at the moment that might change with that.
I guess I think we should keep in mind that there is a five-year review on this and that, I mean, first of all, that could have been expressed repeatedly, their desire to make the neighborhood happy. But also, if after five years, there's egregious issues with this, then their permanent... then their permit doesn't get renewed or it gets modified.
I'm a bit concerned about the the light blocking. And I would think that maybe slats, all of them that I've ever seen are gonna leak through pretty horribly. And I think I would rather see the drop cloth. I don't know if we should make that as a condition. Is that, is the cost difference?
Drop cloth is probably cheaper.
I think you're thinking of two different things. There are slats that do allow light through and then there are ones that don't. And it's essentially, you wouldn't go to the expense of full blocking if, say, you're trying to just obscure a view because from 20 feet away, that little bit of, you know, crevice, you're not gonna see anything. Versus if you're physically trying to block light or sound, you're gonna use a solid slab.
Those slats still weave into the fence, though.
That is correct.
There will be gaps between, but I
It wouldn't be sufficable.
I think about those places that have light pollution in town. If there was one of those fences, that would solve the problem.
Okay.
You, you know. It's like someone's curtain being closed. I would prefer to let them
Okay.
As long as, as long as the light is being blocked and it's not lighting up the sky.
Yeah, it's not gonna be very bright light anyway.
Right.
I'm thinking about terrifying.
Any of those fences around the purple greenhouses would dramatically change how they appeared. If they were tall enough, the fence was tall enough.
And those fences are tall enough either. Just block, this fence doesn't block the entire.
It doesn't block the entire. So there'll be, the cap will be visible.
The entire cap is visible, too.
The light is projected downwards, so.
So you're not gonna be hanging from the peak, though, are you?
No.
Are they gonna be suspended somewhere close to the plant?
Close to the plant, yeah. The closer they are, the better.
Par. Any other comments?
We've gone through this before, but what are the typical, like, they are, these plants generally are not lit during the evening, correct, and night? Those lights are not 24 hours. What are the standard hours the lights are lit?
Difficult to say based on whether it's cloudy day or versus a clear sky, it would be, that would be the difference. We're gonna run them as the least that we can. They're very expensive to run relatively. So we certainly will not run them as any more than
You've talked about like a length of day that you will try to
Yep.
accomplish with the lights. And that was, was it?
12.
12? No more, 14?
Let me see, depending on the
We would want to give them 18 hours of light because when you restrict less than 18 during vegetative stage, they will go into flower. And obviously, we want to have them in the bench stage long enough that when we transition to flower, we shorten the light output, the day length, if you will, artificially. That triggers them to then change into flower.
So at that point, you want to be 18 hours of light?
For flowering, no more than 12.
What was the 18 you said then?
18 is for the vegetative stage.
Right, so during the vegetative stage, you are gonna wanna have 18 hours of light.
Correct.
We can use different lights for that. There can be low intensity lights like LED lights, chop lights, so that they don't, are not bright to keep them into the vegetative photovoltaic.
Because this is something we had talked about not past a certain hour in the evening.
Right.
And now 18 hours is certainly longer than what we were thinking, which was seven or eight o'clock.
Well, 18 hours can start early in the morning, too. But if it's low intensity lights rather than grow lights, it's not gonna be
Is this where you would get into more than one crop? It's a difference.
Particularly if we have a winter crop.
Right.
That is a
It's a lot of nightlight.
Being outside last night, working and directing cars out of our door yard. It is, we have very, very little light pollution in that area. So having those on will be different.
Well, having left here a few weeks ago and seeing the purple glow from because there was mist in the air.
Well, we would all like to control that.
Yep.
How would you feel if we said no lights past X o'clock? So that if you were trying to maximize, if you're trying to get 18 hours, you would just accommodate it by turning them on in the morning earlier?
Depends what X is.
I don't know. Just wondering if we could come up with something that, rather than having to, you know, like, discuss endlessly all these different variables, if we just said, "What if the lights were off by nine?" And I'm just throwing out there, we could put that in a condition and then we could drop this discussion.
In the greenhouse themselves?
Yeah, we would be more comfortable that we would abide that there would not be light pollution. I think that would be comprehensive instead of picking on, you know, time type of thing. I think we'd rather just make it, there's not light pollution, period.
Because we could also black out the greenhouses, and that's something else we also look at, as blacking out the greenhouse themselves in addition to the fencer on the outside.
Right.
So if it starts up and there's
Say no light pollution after nine o'clock.
If there's, if there's issues with light pollution,
We fix it.
we can revisit this.
Absolutely.
I think then we'd just add, I mean, even though you've said it in here, we had another condition saying there is no light pollution, even though that's in the bylaw. Now it's been said very clearly and
Yep.
Yeah.
So a condition would be there will be no nighttime light pollution?
Yeah. I mean, and then we wonder what the definition of that actually means, but
Again, it falls under being good neighbors.
Right. But we could, we could come up with an hour, but I think it would be easier to say no light pollution.
Yeah, yeah.
Would become.
The bylaw requires that the calculation of lot coverage ratios, did that you did, you know, we talked about it last time?
We did talk about it last time. I did not see it in here.
I didn't see it.
But, you know, I looked at the, luckily you have this nice survey map now, and it's really evident about the lot coverage. Visually evident, even if you didn't do a number calculation.
Your existing greenhouse has to
It doesn't matter. First, I've been reviewing, like, lot coverage has to be accommodated.
It's included in the bylaw.
Yeah, but this, this, it's obvious that it falls within the guidelines of the bylaw.
The maintenance plan for the odor control, how often do the scrubbers have to be replaced? And is there a mechanism to ensure that?
As needed. Essentially, it, you know, it's, they're talking manufacturers, difficult to quantify how long it's gonna last, but it's very obvious when the time to change it is.
And Judy, I would say if this is, if you feel like this is an important issue, we could add another condition like the light pollution conditions. Reiterating what's in the bylaw, saying
No odor.
No odor past the property line.
Yeah, okay.
And just
I think that's
And not worry about the minutia of how they're gonna maintain the effectiveness of the scrubbers.
Like the census, that's a major concern of the butters.
Well, and it is in the bylaws, and that's the intention of the scrubber.
So is the answer that we put in another condition?
I personally don't feel a need to. I think, because it's in the bylaw.
It's in the bylaw. It should be clear.
But So this is our package, these three things. Okay.
Survey.
And the survey, right. Okay, we'll go in with that.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the public? Any questions?
I have a question. That last meeting, you guys talked about 500 feet from the school.
This is a planning board meeting or a zoning meeting?
Oh, it was a zoning board meeting, yeah. Sorry about that. How is that 500 feet determined? Is that determined by the law or is that something that one of the boards determines?
It's in the bylaw.
That was, the bylaws, the planning board proposed and the town voted on a year and a half ago was 500 feet from schools, the school property.
And it says from 500 feet from the marijuana establishment. What is the establishment?
The physical structures.
The greenhouse, it's okay. Didn't, that wasn't very clear to me. And I had another question about, there must be waste. You don't use the whole plant, right?
Correct.
Is there odor or anything from that? Like, how is that disposed of?
It'll be essentially anything but the flowers. So the vast majority of any odor is the flowers, and that was evident when we had the site visit. We invited everybody in to smell some existing marijuana plants under the home cultivation, part of the law. And consensus was there was no odor.
And the stalks are chipped and ground into compost.
Well, they composted within the 500 foot
Yeah, it has to be.
Within the envelope?
Yeah, within the
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a CCC regulation.
So if there, for any reason, are flowers that don't meet the standards you need to sell, which must happen occasionally, never on your site.
No.
No, 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 no.
It's all saleable, even from the trimmings, it's a saleable product.
Yeah, we use
It's just sold as a different product form, as key for the flower, to manufacturers.
So you anticipate no waste from odor whatsoever?
Correct.
That's right.
So once, once the stems and so forth have been composted, can they then be used off-site?
Yes.
Yes, they can be land-applied and incorporated into the soil.
Yeah, they're nutrient-rich still. Any other questions from the public? All right.
I have no more questions.
I think we might well advise to approve this with some conditional conditions, being
Do you need to close the public hearing?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I never remember wanting to do that. All right. It is now 7:47. We're gonna close the public meeting. Condition of getting a special permit. Condition of receiving the approval of Cannabis Board Commission and approval of, by the
Board of Health.
Cannabis Commission, CCC. Cannabis Control Commission.
Getting a certificate?
Approval from the state.
We're fine with that, though.
And I have three more conditions to add for discussion anyways. Condition that the security equipment will be housed in the Harvest Building. A condition that there will be at least one odor scrubber in each greenhouse. And a condition that there will
Minimum of?
At least or minimum of? Yeah. Either way, we'd be fine with me. I'm not quite trying to phrase it, but there will not be light pollution from the greenhouses. Maybe just that, that's
That sounds good.
Those are my proposals to add.
Should we? We've talked before about whether we should try and draft the exact wording in these meetings or drafted separately and approve it at the next meeting. Since we're only meeting in two weeks, maybe we could approve a lot of We agree on the sense of it, we could come up with a definite wording. Were these simple enough?
They seem pretty simple. They seem pretty simple. I mean, sometimes I agree, we often have complicated conditions, and these all seem like bullet points. And I think the applicant would be happy if we forged ahead.
You had some others. We have the greenhouse.
First one I had was one scrubber greenhouse. Then there was a question about possibly making it a condition that the Board of Health would approve the new packet. That's what you just mentioned.
Right.
To have them approve that. Light pollution, I had that one down. No odors. That was rejected to be a condition because it's already in the bylaws.
Yes.
I didn't have it. I don't have anything else.
There was a couple at the beginning of the talk.
And we have formal police and fire approval of this plan as opposed to legal changes?
Changes according to we don't, but
So we should just condition our formal acknowledgement of police and fire town safety officials.
Okay.
Formal approval by town safety officials.
That's, that's condition number seven.
Of updated plan. Because just to not be confused with the approval that they've already given.
Formal approval of updated
Just so they see the latest plan and say, "Yes, everything's still good."
So you have seven, Judy? It sounds like Mary had a couple of these doubled up.
I have six.
I just have my three that I
Oh, I don't have the Cannabis Control Commission, so that would make sense.
I can read that.
That's fine. Well, Judy's got it to give to me so I can write this up correctly.
Well, somebody should read the back.
Me, too.
Whichever version we're gonna use.
I don't think mine are.
You want me to read what I have? Yes, just to make sure they manage. Get the special permit from the ZBA. Number two, get CCC approval. Number three, get Board of Health approval. And that's of the new package.
Right.
Number four, that statement of some sort that the security equipment will be housed in the Harvest Building.
Right, that the security
Or, no, we're not looking for a statement, we're just saying
No, just saying that's fact. That's how it'll be. That's a condition of the approval.
We're making a condition that, that's, we agree, that's where it should be. Number five, at least one scrubber in each greenhouse. Six, no light pollution. Seven, formal approval and approval of the updated plan by town safety officials.
Check.
Thank you very much.
My only, you know, change would be it says not just scrubber, but odor scrubber.
I think mine says that, too.
Yep.
Well, I'd make a motion we approve the site plan with these seven conditions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you're refusing? So the motion passes. We will get something to you in the mail within a week.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Just one comment. The CCC will need something before they can sign off on it, so I think this will work.
You're saying sooner is better.
Yes, Brian, Brian has a packet that he needs to respond either to, we've satisfied our local permitting and approvals or have still in the process, so I local permitting and approvals, or have still in the process, so I'll communicate with him.
Brian, the Brian that I know.
The administrator.
And when is the, your hearing on, uh, special permit?
Thursday.
Thursday, yes. So I've got at least eleven to get to.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
What's the next thing?
I don't know, it's on the bottom, like, five.
We have these copies of the...
Toro Verde, three.
Boy, I hope this is less complicated.
Uh, well, I'm here to, uh, submit a site plan application for retail marijuana establishment at 424 State Road, which is the Sugarloaf Shops, Building A, uh, which I came for an informal discussion a week ago. Um, so I don't know what the procedure is for submission, but I have kind of original...
Give me and I sign off on?
Important things to check.
We have the check sheet.
And these guys have been folding school.
Well, we submitted in North Hampton a lot, so we, we are absolutely in folding school. So, this is our application form. And check. And do you take any of this tonight, or does this all go to the town clerk?
Those all go to the town clerk.
Okay.
What I will do is, once I get this, um, signed, we'll make copies so that everybody's got the same copy, and this will be the legal...
One of those packets is for the planning board.
What's that?
One of those packets is for the planning board, why don't we keep one packet?
Yep.
And pass it around amongst us.
Actually, what we should do is request digital copies?
Absolutely.
And if you send them to town, we'll make them for us.
That's good.
I'd be happy to add this, and then I'll go turn it to the, so it's more in our box. I'm hoping you can do the, like, a five-minute...
Now?
I'd like that.
Sure.
Just 'cause I missed last episode, maybe open up one of these plans that I have here. See if we can make this work as well as the last project. It's a pretty primitive setup.
You know, we should start asking for digital, if we can, so people can see.
Right.
One of those, though.
Well, I have the password.
So, as I mentioned, this is at the Sugarloaf Shop site, so of course the town line with Deerfield is right here. This is Building A, which is at the northern portion of the lot, and the next sheet has a larger version of the same site. So, the, my client, which is Toro Verde number three, which is a subsidiary of Harvest Inc., which is the parent company, um, which has a number of establishments in different states throughout the country, they have a different legal organization for each thing that they're building in Massachusetts, so there's a...
So this is number three in the state?
So they are, they are working on three retail locations, one in North Hampton, one in Waitley, one in Greenfield, as well as a grow facility in Deerfield that will supply product to those locations. Each one has its own legal entity, why I do not know, but I, I'm sure they have their reasons. Uh, so they have, uh, entered a lease with the owner, uh, as was discussed last week. One of these plans, I actually erased its property line, but it still shows on this plan, but this is all a condominium, uh, Building A, which is the one that our client is leasing, as well as Building C, which is just a small storage barn, are owned by Old State Road LLC, um, and then Building B is owned by Yankee Candle. Uh, so this building is 8,000 square feet, of which only 5,000 square feet is allowed to be the, uh, retail facility by the zoning code, so, uh, there will be renovation inside to create a 5,000-square-foot store, possibly less. Uh, the remaining, uh, square footage would be left idle initially, it may be sublet for general retail, but would not be part of the operation. Uh, essentially zero external, um, improvements, uh, everything, uh, is, is internal, so existing site access from the driveway, parking lots, um, no utility changes and stormwater changes because there's no difference in previous area. Uh, we will, um, take the, the liberty of the two signs that were allowed under the code, uh, one wall sign, and really, uh, presumably replace the, um, existing freestanding sign at the driveway, um, both of those being 12 square feet or less.
Those will be under the special permit, that's just on Board of Health for that.
Right.
Right. So we have nothing to do with the signs?
Okay, nothing at all. All right, well, it's, it's mentioned in, in the write-up, um, so that you're at least aware of it. Um, and so in the packet that I've submitted, tried to go through a, a lot of the regulations in the zoning code, again, uh, several of them, uh, there's not a whole lot to say because the existing use in this facility was retail, it still will be retail, obviously of a different product that has its own sensitivities. I have a neighborhood map here, which shows the, um, land uses as required that are within 1,000 feet of the property, and then I also have the 500-foot buffer around the facility itself to identify what those uses are and to show that there are no prohibited uses. There is one gray area on that, there, so there are no schools, there, I can't remember.
Church, schools, church, playgrounds.
Right, so no parks, no schools. Um, there is outside of the 500-foot, um, buffer, but within the 1,000-foot, is this property down here, which seems to have an occasional religious use. It's, um, this is down on Old State Road, um, there's, there's the furniture maker down here, and this property, at least on Google Maps, comes up as the Merge at the Barn, which leads to a link to Mountain of Worship, uh, which claims to have some kind of meeting there occasionally. Um, I don't know if that would qualify as a church under the code, but regardless, it's outside of 500-foot radius.
And you saw the zoning, there's a provision for, if it was even less than 500, if it was up.
Correct.
You could be as close as 300 and ask for a, a special, away from...
Right, so we are not violating that, but I did want to draw attention to it because I didn't want to make, make it seem like we were overlooking that.
The daycare at the corner of State Road, and that is out of it, that's buried in the garden, correct?
The other side of railroad tracks.
Yes, it's, it's here.
Oh, it's on this property?
Right there, yeah.
Okay.
At least there has been.
Preschool, I think it's back again, this is the third, you know, donation.
But anyhow.
So apologies for overlooking that, but that property is, is well outside of our 500-foot radius. Um, and then I do have, um, I had, uh, long conversations with the head of security for Harvest to understand, uh, what the plan is, really a safety and security plan, uh, which I'll go through more thoroughly at the public hearing, uh, but that's in the letter that I wrote, as well as a discussion of the odor control, um, equipment that's going to be built in, and, uh, some of the, I, I did a lot of homework on that and found the science of it kind of interesting, so I included a little bit of that, uh, which I thought would be helpful. As I was listening to the discussion about odor, uh, from the previous item, I did realize I intended to include cut sheets from some of that equipment that I received this morning and forgot, so I will follow up and, and provide that of the, some of the equipment that they're actually going to be using, um, interior. But of course, the standard would be, uh, there should be no odor detectable outside the walls of the building. That's, that's pretty clear.
This is entirely retail, no processing?
Correct, no processing, no manufacturing, no cultivation, this is just retail.
Well, I can tell you that in North Hampton, when you open the door, the odor comes out.
I, I believe, yeah, my, so my, my wife has been a medical patient there for about a year now, um, and she uses the app because she doesn't want to spend any more time in there than she has to, so we're, we're well aware of that. Uh, but the, you know, the owner has a track record, they have a number of facilities, and, and they're committed to really having best in the industry control, um, which I look forward to talking about more.
Great. So any other questions for now?
That's good, that was just, little ordinations, helpful.
Sure.
Okay, so we will have to advertise for a public hearing for this, and...
Committee's all at 45 days.
Yep.
Is that an extra binder book?
Um, it is the one that goes with the planning board's copy, so yes.
Excuse me, but how many sets are, are going back to the top?
Six.
She'll get six, and we have one.
You have one.
We brought seven, yes.
Okay, so, public hearing. Do it for January sometime? I don't want to try doing it at the end of December.
Or at, on the 18th.
Yeah.
Which is not on time to advertise.
Get advertised.
Very good.
Okay, so with the regular meeting, uh, the last Tuesday and...
Which is the 29th.
January?
Um, I think we prefer earlier, if that's possible.
About two weeks ahead of the 15th?
Excuse me?
15th?
I don't mind meeting a, a different week in January, that's just fine, I mean, I prefer not to meet twice if we can help it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm out of school, so it doesn't bother me.
We're back in the 22nd, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to propose again that we move our meeting time to 6:30.
Right.
Instead of 7:00.
But that's going to be a total, a permanent change to...
Yeah, oh, yeah, I thought we were doing it for December, I was a little sad that we didn't do it today. Uh, so, the 15th? Looks good for me.
I, I see that, let me just check my calendar here, but I'm sure it's... I see no problem with January 15th.
Okay. So, I'm going to close, remove my makeup.
6:45.
Seven?
6:45, right.
6:30 meeting, 6:45 public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, there's time to review the minutes for a change?
Okay.
So?
Seven?
Yep.
So 6:45.
Um, copies, number of copies?
Six.
Six copies.
Seven.
That's one of the copies.
That's one, that's one of the seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, but make, make seven copies anyway.
I won't check.
Well, I'm going to give you one of those for legal purposes.
Right.
You look like you're falling asleep. Your lights look nice.
Shut off the lights.
We checked them out yesterday. Did you folks have any questions while we're here?
It's, it's hard to come in, even the other one, if you don't see anything. You're asking for comments, nice to have one.
We're singularly unsuccessful in getting them to bring large drawings.
We're doing digital, so it's on a website, so anybody can look and see what's going on.
Well, I think we should talk about asking people for, to bring digital things that they could project.
Yep. You're asking for butters to come in, and if you don't live immediately near, I mean, I live across the street, I, I didn't know the final proposal until they came here today.
Well, you weren't the only one, actually.
And I know, and all the details in, in the write-up, I, I guess, it's, butters maybe are kind of disadvantaged, because you don't see any of that, and, and you guys are acting as, as a board for the town, I understand that, but when you want input from butters, you've got to give them something to look at to respond, rather than, no, we don't want noise, no, we don't want odor, you know? That's all you want, fine.
You have suggestions, we...
We would love to be able to get more butters.
We'd be loved to be able to get bigger drawings, too, which we've got, in some cases haven't been successful.
It's on the website.
As there is a note, not the announcement, but the information that they submit, put all that on, on the website, so anybody, anybody can look at that.
So this, this is your...
We didn't get to that either.
I know, you can, but in the future stuff, maybe.
All right. What did I miss?
Nothing, you have the planning board copies, this one, could you?
Discussion about trying to encourage people to bring digital things, so if you have a laptop, this projector.
I actually prefer to do it that way, as long as there's a good setup for it, so I'd be happy to. We have...
Yeah, because we can arrange it.
Okay, yeah, I would be very happy to do that.
Putting it on the website, so everybody...
That's my check, I don't want to make it look like I'm... That goes to the...
Why would it be only us to look at it?
Of course, we'll go to the comments, right?
We want comments from the public, it's kind of hard to...
But I want to make, so, where did, where did you get the copies? He gave them to me, but you need one.
I only need, you only need the top one, the one that I gave you, because that should have been signed, and these other copies should need to go...
Correct, uh, but one should go with the planning board set also, I think.
Does that have a set for the planning board?
Yep. And then we need a set here for the town clerk. And we'll put that checked with that one.
I think you need one more copy.
Well, I need, so where, how many copies you made?
I made six, just as I was told.
Yeah, I have, I have a stack of them here.
Okay.
That will be...
Yeah, I need one for this one here, which is going to be the town clerk.
Well, he needs seven, go with each of the plans, one for Dawn, one for him.
We need more, that's not signing it to...
He brought seven sets of plans.
Aha!
You're going to make two more copies?
No. Nope, we're, we're good.
Actually, this is the original, that's yours.
Right.
Never seen it be this confusing.
Okay, so now, I want one, which is not yours, to put on the town clerk.
We can do that.
And you've got one, right, that's signed?
There we go.
All right.
But I can make more copies if we need to.
Okay, so you, you're going to give this to town clerk tomorrow, right?
Yes. All right, I'm sure of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I lost my agenda.
Designate a planning board, I'm assuming one member, to serve on the capital improvement planning committee.
Right.
And I am not a volunteer.
And I what?
Nothing here.
Oh, good.
You guys want to describe the, what that means?
What level of responsibility is that?
Yeah, just how bad will that be?
And what knowledge do you need?
How often does it mean? Yeah.
So, the capital improvement planning committee is responsible for reviewing, prioritizing, and recommending to the select board and the finance committee capital projects for the town. Historically, and I'll, I'll give you my, my historical experience, which is two years, um, the committee's met once each year, um, and I'm hoping to expand that because it, it, our capital plan could, could use some...
Improvement.
Expansion and improvement, yeah, it could use some improvement. Um, and we really want to start taking in-depth a look at some of our facilities that we have, and really plan out for the next 10 years as to what projects we have, so, um, looking for people who would want to be really, you know, it would, it would be year-round, um, with a little bit, with a couple more meetings during budget season when we finalize the report. If I had to guess at the number of meetings, I would say maybe four to five a year. I don't think it's, it's going to be that many, but we'd like to engage the committee, uh, a little bit more and have them actually look at some of our facilities and, and see what the department heads are requesting, because in the past, it's just been sort of, well, facility needs a new roof, and no one really has an idea as to why or what condition it's in in terms of the, the knowledge of the committee, so we're trying to expand that a little bit.
Now, we've had a representative who is resigned, is that...
It's really not clear to me, at least since I've been here. There's no active member of the planning board that's participating in the committee.
I've never heard anybody on the planning board talk about being part of the capital...
Bruce is clear, he was our representative member. It was like ninety-six, we asked once the heat report back to us, and it never happened, but I think he's technically our...
The bylaws written that, the, the way that I read the bylaws says that there should be a member of the planning board on the capital improvement planning committee. And there's, there's, there's several at-large spots, there's... So the way that I interpret the situation now is that we would have, we have one at-large vacancy. And that's assuming Bruce would continue on as an at-large, and we would have one planning board member vacancy.
I guess absolutely.
I'll, I'll give you my firstborn child.
Yeah.
I'll give you his firstborn child, too.
He would be a good representative.
I will nominate Nicholas to serve.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I think it'd be pretty good.
As long as I'm still on the planning board.
Okay, review order guidelines for the marijuana facilities.
Well, based on today's discussion, I'm not sure it's necessary. I've written some up based on that plan from Aspen that, that I found. But then I looked at the information. We've prepared for marijuana establishments. And number ten says, "An odor control plan detailing..." "...the specific odor emitting activities or processes to be conducted on-site, the source of those odors, the locations from which they are emitted from the facility, the frequency of such odor emitting activities, the duration of such, and the administrative and engineering controls that would be implemented to control such odors, including maintenance of such controls."
This is the guideline thing that you wrote that we all approved as useful for people?
Yeah, that's posted on the website and we sent to the ZBA. I think it's all there.
I kinda think so.
So I would withdraw the suggestion. And rely on what we've already approved.
Okay, I thought you wanted to modify that somehow.
No, I thought we needed separate things and I had forgotten that it was this, so...
Okay.
Claire?
Yeah.
I think it's all here and we don't, I mean, the one thing that's not here is that we might wanna require... An engineer to look over things in some circumstances, but we could do that anyway. So I, I will... I think the finance is...
Okay.
Very interesting, Toro Verde gentleman, seems like he's very enthusiastic about what he's found about this, so I'm very interested.
Enthusiastic about what he's found about?
Odor controls. Wasn't that what he was...
No, he was saying that he had, he had his odor control stuff, he just had forgotten to bring it.
Yeah, but he was very excited about the science and what he learned.
Oh, 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 right, that the fact there is science about it.
Right, and I'm very interested in what he's gonna present and some of his sources.
Right, yes.
Yeah, good point. Okay.
Finding someone so excited about that was interesting.
I just heard anything for other.
How move we adjourn?
Are we gonna do minutes so we don't get in trouble?
Okay, so we've got two, two to approve, right?
Yes, we have the thirtieth and the twenty-seventh.
I had the thirtieth.
It's a mess, though. Yes, remember, page four is on the back of page one.
Okay.
Oh, goodness.
All right, we're doing, she's gonna...
She's gonna make it a little clearer for herself. She's trying to save paper. I don't know my printer very well.
He's got a lot of details about the odor control. Which...
It's just a comparison between the two. His, like, that.
The odor-causing terpenes are volatile organic compounds. They readily evaporate to the atmosphere, which causes cannabis odor to be particularly intense. Cannabis terpenes are also highly susceptible to oxidation. Once oxidized, they're permanently neutralized as the oxidized terpenes cannot interact with nerve sensors in human nerves. The opposed system will inject an oxidizing chemical into the HVAC system for distribution throughout the facility. The oxidizing chemicals all carry OSHA maximum exposure levels, and the system is designed to ensure airborne levels are at a fraction of those maximums. The air purification system also imparts an ionic charge to terpenes passing through the system, which causes them to coagulate and drop out of the air. Controlled studies have shown this process to be highly effective at eliminating terpenes, terpene concentrations in the air. The odor control plan will also include a monitoring component during building commissioning as a means of quality control.
Like that.
Too bad that we, yeah, this wasn't our initial contact.
Yes, there is... What to achieve. That he even folded it.
This is my book.
What happened to Mary? She's making copies. She's picking up the copy right now. With one, four, two, and three. My hat is...
Okay, so right now, the, when we had the hearing on the thirtieth, we just moved to resume the public hearing on December eighteenth. We didn't specify a time, so we're gonna make it at six forty-five as well.
Sorry, I had to warm up. I just thought you were beating it up.
We have time to advertise that? Do we have time for that?
I mean, they were advertised before at seven, so I'm not sure we can choose.
Well, we, we continued it, so...
If we didn't mention a change in time, people will soon as I want.
Then if they look at the agenda.
Is there an advertising? We, we don't need to advertise it.
No, we just continued it.
It's continued.
No, we didn't mention it.
Are there other things on the agenda for that meeting?
You want Keith one?
Because we could just swap, we could swap, we could start at six thirty and do...
Put Keith first.
Keith, yeah, or whatever else is on it, minutes.
I'm sure he would appreciate that greatly.
And...
Yeah.
And then can have them at seven as expected.
Sounds good. All right, so we're gonna look at, at October thirtieth. So then, you had a question about the setback? Mary, on page two?
Yeah, um, maybe that doesn't even have to be in there.
I, I was proposing that we just strike it.
Yep.
Yeah.
We could strike that entire thing, the setback is currently, we don't, we don't need any of it.
I'm getting rid of the whole thing.
Okay. On page two, in the second paragraph... I can pass you my notes, Mary, but I was, on the second or third sentence says, "She explained that the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program has said..." That, and then I crossed out...
Whatever.
And changed it to, "Has said that the project is too close to the river channel." "And..." And then picked up again, "Will require a special state permit due to the impact." I found that was just confusing, the way it was written. And I can hand you this if you like. And in the last sentence, very end of that...
Hold on, just, well, okay, if you get the sentence.
Oh, yeah, I hear you. The last sentence of that same paragraph. "And then schedule continuance of the hearing to a date following the ZBA," and I just changed it to "meeting," where you wrote, addresses the variants. And Judy had a suggestion down in the third paragraph.
The third paragraph, landscaping, same page. Landscaping bullet.
Oh yeah, somewhere along in the panels, that paragraph.
Or the second bullet point where it says landscaping, the end of that, and Mary Savage will send a digital copy to Judy to distribute to the board. I think... That probably came at that point in the meeting, but it, it wasn't... It was intended to be a digital copy of the whole plan.
Oh, okay, not the maintenance plan.
So it's...
Okay.
So I would put it not in that set of bullet points, but up as an item on its own somewhere.
Okay, separate that.
It's...
Was to whole package.
Yeah.
Whole application package.
I can just put it at the end or something.
My only other suggestion was at the top of page three, taking the D off band at the end of the first sentence. But that's...
First sentence on page three?
Yeah, and agricultural exemption, do you have passive those?
Oh, it's...
And...
Oh, I see. Does anybody else have anything to? I'll make a motion, we've approved the minutes, but those changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. November twenty-seventh?
Oh, there's, Nicholas, there's a thing here.
That was Judy, and that was the, just, oh, that's the same thing we just addressed, yeah, okay.
Had it made in a separate paragraph.
Okay, this can go back to Nicholas.
We...
You have page four, because I...
I, yes, yes.
You gave me what goes now and order.
Okay, so I'll prove as amended.
I think the November twenty-seventh was fine and we accepted.
Public hearing. So...
Actually, we resumed the public hearing from October sixteen, not continued.
I thought we were gonna resume it. Okay.
Resume, not continue. Resume. Does it have to be re-advertised?
Okay, we resume, it wasn't...
Just say resume.
Yeah, resume. So nobody thinks there's any, there's any reason to explain why, or any, just reasons to take care of that.
Okay, so not in, we're just under other, so are we gonna approve that, sorry, hold on?
I will second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, what are we doing now?
We have now approved November twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Judy brought it forward, I seconded.
Under other, we discussed maybe not putting the next meeting date on the agenda. Do we wanna make that? Change that to put the next scheduled, next normally scheduled, if needed, do we wanna completely delete it?
What's the, what's the utility of having it at all? Does it add?
I have no idea.
You just inherited it?
Yeah.
I've never seen anybody else do it.
I don't see any advantage to it.
The select board does, but their meetings tend to be quite...
Regular.
Regular.
Yeah.
And I think maybe they say scheduled.
I don't think what, you know, the reason is for you, that you're responding to it is gonna happen, like it happened again.
Right.
That was just an experience that we happened to have, where someone thought that was the public hearing date because it said next meeting.
Because it's on the agenda.
Because it's on the agenda, they thought it was publicized, but...
Well, okay, kind of is the next posted.
Yes.
But that's not posted, but...
It's not. That was just a, you know, that was just a strange situation.
Maybe if we make a change, well, I think on the, on the webpage, it says it's the third Thursday of every month.
Uh, last Tuesday.
I mean, third, there's third Tuesday.
Last Tuesday.
Last, it's the last, yeah, right.
It's the last Tuesday.
Right, the last Tuesday.
They say it's the third.
I don't think so.
I think, I think those are labeled as, as sort of typical, so, or something like that, it's not...
Well, I don't see any reason to put it on, so I'm gonna put it on. So we're gonna take it off.
I think that's a good...
We're gonna change meetings to six thirty and hearings to start at six forty-five.
And are we gonna find another member?
So, I talked to Helena and she's gotten more responsibility at her new job and... Was willing to resign if...
Did she ever get sworn in?
I don't know. But, um... I really would like to have her experience on the board, but I also would really like to have somebody that can be a...
Could you make her like a environmental consultant or something?
An ad hoc member, somebody who could just come and, and sit and advise us.
Associate member?
Well, I think Patty Devine is kind of that way with the conservation board. I don't know, I'll ask Scott what, what they call her, but she's not an official member, but she shows up at meetings when she can.
She was there the other day.
Yeah. So I'll talk to Brian about that and see what we can do in it.
Yeah, because her expertise would be great to have.
Yeah.
But even more valuable to have another active, active member.
Yeah, because we're, we're gonna get more and more things that we have to produce. And not having, the summertime, not having...
All right.
Sarah and I, I watched Jennifer Soler, and I have some photos.
I would love to hear a two-minute reaction to what, what you saw.
It's big.
It's big, it's big, it's a lot of... It's big, it's a lot of that land down there.
There's no way to block it. It's the whole bottom land. It's bigger than it looks on the... That looks bigger because the lot doesn't show what's the... It is such a large view. Right, is... I mean, yes, we've got news to tell on hold, but that is... The drawing doesn't show what's woodlot. So you have a tendency to think that the river comes in front of the woodlot, and it doesn't because we're behind. So it looks like open space in the plan. It doesn't look like it visually because of trees.
So it looks like it's filling the whole open land. It is, in fact.
It is, in fact. And it also is much more visible from the street than I expected it to be. And...
How'd they mark it out?
Pink and blue. They couldn't find any red.
Pink and blue, like around the perimeter?
On various... I think that pink was what was going to be in AR-1. Blue was the original. Vice versa. And then some of them took off. Were not as staked as well as they could have been there. And she was the only one with an orange vest. I'm like, wow, I guess on a Saturday, dirty hunting season. So she's impressive that she remembered that at all.
There was nobody from the Conservation Commission there. Many others.
Many butters.
Only Roger from the ZBA, which is unfortunate. The 100 feet out of the 400 feet foot setback is big, too. It looked bigger in the ground than I thought the inclusion in the area would be. And it's a quarter of the zone.
But I mean, that actually puts it less out of view, but...
More out of view?
Yeah, because it's closer to the road, and less... But it's huge. It's... It is the entire... As you look out across from that, going by Brad's house, it is the entire forefront of your sideline.
The problem is that the road comes down on this.
There is no way to...
And up to it. So I mean, like, I've already blocked out the thing on Christian Lane. I don't notice it at all anymore unless I turn and look at it and see what they've done.
It's flat.
Yeah.
This is... You're looking down to the... And the other thing is, one of the questions was, are these going on the topography that's there, or even a level? And the topography there goes up from this, you know, goes down from the street and flat, and then up slightly at the back, so it rises from the street. You look down on it, and it goes up. And you can't block it from across the street, you can't block it either. Because you're...
It doesn't go up very much because...
No, it doesn't.
Because that swale through there was an old meander path. So it's maybe a meter up, but I don't think any more than that.
Questions were good.
Well, we'll see.
Thursday will be very interesting.
Because are they coming to the ZBA on Thursday also?
Yes.
Well, it's a busy night. They're doing both.
All right, so the only mail we've got is from Tom Hadley, and they're going to do a new library senior center, I think.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Hey, we're catching up with the newspapers.
All right, I'll move, we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?